Welcome to the City of Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals for Monday, April 8th, 2024. Meeting will be held in City Council chambers and may also be reviewed via Zoom and on LTC and YouTube. Housekeeping tip, if you're in the chambers, if you have your cellphone, can you please put it on silent or stunned so as not to disturb the proceedings? And if you need to have a conversation with someone in the chambers while the meeting is going on, please take it out to the hallway. Beginning our agenda, starting with Continued Business, CBA 2023-54. Special permit. The applicant is Nick Fotopoulos, property located at 1600 Middlesex Street. Nick Fotopoulos has applied to the Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals seeking special permit approval to operate a used car dealership at 1600 Middlesex Street. Subject property is located in the regional retail zoning district. Project requires special permit approval pursuant to Section 12.6 of the Lowell zoning ordinance and for any other relief required under the Lowell zoning ordinance. We did receive communication from the applicant requesting a continuance. Is the applicant available or online? No. All right. I know this has already been continued once previously. The only thing I would mention is I don't recall the applicant even giving us an excuse as to why he wants a continuance, which I find very, you know, a little odd. But regardless, well, I think if it's okay with the board, I would be subject to continuing one more time to give the applicant the benefit of the doubt. But any other comments, questions, concerns?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say it's often difficult to get documents done in time for these meetings, for these hearings, so I'm guessing that might have been part of it.
Yeah. No, I agree, but I think we, part of our relief for continuance is we do have to, there must be some reason or to grant relief, but for this purposes, I would be open to the continuance if that's what the board wishes. So any other questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, can I have a motion for continuance, please?
Excuse me. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just ask, what's the next available hearing that we have?
April 22nd.
Very good. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for CBA 2023-54 for a special permit at 1600 Middlesex Street to be continued to April 22nd?
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty-six. I'm sorry, twenty-six, 2024.
Motion by Member McCarthy, seconded by Member Prokop. Okay, roll call, please.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve continuance to April 26, 2024.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance to April 26, 2024.
Member Prokop.
Approve continuance, April 26, 2024.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Hovey.
Approval, but can we also note that it's the 22nd, not the 26th?
Oh, it is the 22nd. My apologies, I thought you said the 26th.
That's what I wrote down. Member Nickerson.
Twenty-second, okay. My apologies, I thought I heard the 26th. Okay, continuance been approved. Peter, can we let the applicant know this is the second continuance, or third continuance, and we usually don't go past three, and if he's not ready for the next one, well, we'll take it from there, but please let the, please let the applicant know that what our, what our regular policy usually is. Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, CBA 2023-43, petition for variance. Applicant is Wedman Johnathus, Johnathus, excuse me, if I butchered that. Property located at 39 Corbett Street. Wedman Johnathus has applied for the Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals seeking variance approval to construct a second-story addition to the existing single-family home at 39 Corbett Street. Subject property is located at the traditional single-family zoning district. Project requires variance approval from the Zoning Board of Appeals per Section 5.1 for relief for maximum floor area ratio requirement and for any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. Anybody here from the applicant? If you could just approach the podium and just state your name and address for the record and let us know about the project, please.
Good evening, board members. My name is Evan Semir. I'm here and on behalf of my client, Wedman Johnathus and his wife. We, I guess, we've been here a couple times. So hopefully, we have a bunch of, I mean, we did some reviews and architectural review and also the engineering site review on the plan. Originally, the plan was to construct a, construct an extension of 16 feet by 17 feet and then going up as well at the same time. And, I mean, from advice we had from the board, we had, we had reduced that to 12 feet instead of 16 feet. As well, we, we shrank the, the extension on the second floor. We reduced that back again with another four feet from that existing. Last time, we had, there was some discrepancy with the, with the site engineering survey and the architectural drawing. I believe this has been rectified. We had some issues with the, with the maximum FAR that was in the survey, survey's plan. I believe that's been revised and put to the correct amount. So we, we are seeking a variance for the client. They trying to, they expand, like last time, like we said, the family is expanding, they're just adding another bedroom on the second floor. They're not adding that many things, just a second bedroom on the second floor and a family room on the first floor. And again, from the, from the advice of the board, we, we had reduced considerably the expansion that we had previously and reduced it to, to a smaller size expansion, but still adding just one bedroom on the second floor and adding a family room on the, on the first floor. I'll be happy to answer some questions if you guys have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Right now, we're just going to open up to the public and then we'll go from there. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Seeing none, that portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of this petition? In opposition? In opposition? Seeing none, that portion of the public hearing is now closed. Now, I'd like to open up to the board. Chair recognizes Member Nickerson. Member Nickerson, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, I think cutting back the scale of the project itself looks great, to be honest with you. Obviously, trying to expand your home to stay in the home rather than sell, try to find someplace else to go, makes a lot of sense, but I don't really have any questions. So, thank you, though, yeah.
Thank you, John. Chair recognizes Member Hovey. Member Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I originally had concerns when this was brought before the board, and I just have a couple clarifying questions. On the new site plans, it shows that you're moving the bulkhead to the backside of the new addition, correct?
Yes, so that, so there is not going to be a, a found, a basement floor, so the bulkhead is just going to be for access to underneath, underneath the, the addition. There's no, there's no, there's not a basement, because we, we're trying to reduce the FAR, we don't, we don't have, there's not a basement going, going in underneath that.
Okay. On the floor plans, it shows that there is a crawl space under?
Yes, on the, yeah, on the architectural drawing, there's a crawl space.
All right, so in order to address some FAR, you just didn't want to put a basement underneath it? How deep is the crawl space going to be from ceiling? If you have a bulkhead, a bulkhead usually leads downstairs.
So I, so I think this is just, I mean, it's just going to be an access underneath the, underneath the, underneath the extension, expansion. It's not going to be like a bulkhead, because that bulkhead is from the, from the original one is going to be closed. That's just going to be an access space to clean up or whatever. It's not going to be a bulkhead there.
Right. On this site plan that was just submitted to us, it shows a new bulkhead going in.
So I'm, I'm not sure, we, we submit the same architectural drawing to the, to the, to the site engineer, so I'm not sure why he put a bulkhead there. There's not going to be a?
So, so there's going to be no bulkhead?
There's not going to be no bulkhead.
Okay. So my original concern was the neighborhood, the median FAR is 6.234 in that range, and we're asking not only for a one and two-story addition, but we're putting a second story on the existing one floor. So we're really putting a, a large amount of area, which is why the FAR has already gone up, into a neighborhood that it doesn't fit in with the, the rest of the neighborhood. If there's nine houses surrounding this that has an FAR on the higher end, around six, and we're at just under nine, I'm guessing with the new FAR according to this?
Yeah.
Right. So we're looking for a significant increase. And, you know, we're adding a story on a floor that's only a foot and a half away from the neighbor's property, right?
Sorry, the noises, I'm sorry.
I'm just letting them go by, yeah. So we're adding a floor on an existing story that's only a foot and a half away from the neighbor's property.
So, well, part, part of, part of that is, yeah, part of that is going to be, it's on, yeah, part of that is going to be a foot away, but the remaining, the remainder of it is?
Right, so we're already close, we're, we're a foot and a half away from the property line over there, and, you know, if we came with, you know, we're adding a single story on the back end, that would be one thing. I think the fact that we're adding a second story on the existing one story that's so close to the property line, plus an additional two stories beyond that, I think that's where we get into the density of these neighborhoods, and I think that's where we're missing on the intent of zoning, because I think the intent of zoning is to avoid situations like these. So I'm having a hard time with this. I'm having a hard time finding hardship in this. I get that we have an expanding family and we want to keep them in there, but this is an already woefully undersized lot. We're at 3,000 square feet instead of 7,000, so there's just a lot of, lot of issues that I see with this that, unfortunately, I, I can't support this project as it is for multitude of reasons. I think that second story on the existing one story so close to your neighbor's property, the neighbor's property, is a, a big issue, and then adding two more stories instead of one is, is just, we talk about character of the neighborhood or intent of zoning, and I think this, this doesn't meet it. So I'll listen to the rest of the board, but as it stands, I can't support this. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Tim. Chair recognizes Member Prokop. Member Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're adding a bedroom on the second floor. You're not adding a whole floor, right?
No, we're just adding one bedroom on the second floor.
Okay, that's what I thought. I mean, I, as I looked in the area, I drove on, it seems like a lot of the houses have the same lotage, right? They're under 7,000 square feet. And, I mean, there's a little bit of space, I mean, I see where the cars are parked. I do appreciate the fact that you have, you know, you adhere to what the board had recommended, and I think it's well within the means of what the neighborhood looks like. It's not necessarily the hardship that, that, that I see, but I, I think the fact that you have a lot of that, a lot of the properties in that area seem to be in the same type of development, the same lotage. So I'm not, I don't think that you are above the means of, of, you know, what you're asking for or what the neighborhood looks like. So I, I don't have any questions. I, I would be supporting this because I saw that the modifications made, I think it's, it's palatable for the neighborhood. And also, initially, when you first came, your neighbors were opposed to the development, and I think it's, it's considerable that the fact that they're not here in opposition again because you've worked with them and, and they seem to be happy with, with what you're trying to do, so.
That's correct.
I yield.
Thank you, George. The Chair recognizes Member McCarthy. Member McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say thank you for revising the plans in the positive direction. I think it's a big improvement over what was originally proposed by far. I think I said that at the last meeting. I do see some mistakes that I'd like to be clarified on the site plan. So, Peter, the FAR, what is it?
It can be best summarized as the amount of habitable space.
No, not definition-wise.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I was like.
Taking you to school.
I'm sorry. It labels the proposed maximum FAR proposed as .23. Is that added to the .62 existing to give a proposed FAR of .85?
No, that, that's, that's the, that's the, .23 is the adding to the .62, which gives you the .85.
So I think the site plan should be corrected to say the proposed FAR is .85. That's the first one I'd like to see corrected, and I think also we should correct the site plan to not show the bulkhead. But I think we should also correct the site plan to show the side stair on the west side in the driveway that's missing also. So I'd like to make a condition to revise the site plan or provide a revised site plan that shows the corrected FAR to .85 and then removes the bulkhead and provides the westerly side egress stair.
Yes.
To, remember, Tim Hovey's point, we have a, a structure going on in the Highlands right now where we have this half-story addition happening, and it does make a difference substantially, understanding how these half-stories are half-stories. However, I do think that there is some grace here, that the dormers basically are raising the existing roof up roughly four feet versus a full, you know, eight feet or so. So there's already a construction type here that is a story and a half, but the exterior wall is elevated above the finished floor of the second floor, so it doesn't, doesn't affect the character as significantly as adding a full second story, in my opinion. So I, I think that there is some sensitivity to the existing neighborhood with the way you did the proposed addition. So I, I do think that it's a stretch, but it does fit in with the revised plans being modified to the extent that you did, and I'm glad to see that. Also, the other relief that you're looking for is relief that is existing on-site.
Yes.
Your lot size, your dwelling unit area, frontage, oh, side yard setbacks need to also be corrected on your site plan. You're not changing the side yard setbacks, yet it does state that you're, you are looking for relief.
Yeah, I see that.
So it, it basically, the relief provided, I'm trying to understand what you've got written down here, but you've got 5.5 feet to 10 feet, sum of 15.5 feet, and then proposed relief at 4.5 feet to zero and nine, some 9.5 feet. You don't have a zero side yard setback here at all.
No.
Well, it should be cleaned up, but in any event, it's reflecting existing conditions on the site. It's not asking for more relief than, in fact, the setback of the addition in the back is more than you have on the existing structure, so there's an improvement with what you've done, but the site plan is a little bit sloppy.
Okay.
It's got a few mistakes here. I'd like to see that added to the list of corrections.
Okay.
That being said, the relief on the FAR is significant, but again, you've really reduced the size down to something that I feel is more manageable in the neighborhood, and it's set back far enough that I think it doesn't really impact the street as, as So I'd like to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dennis. Chair recognizes Member Brier. Member Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Upon your initial visit, I spoke favorably of these plans, and I was optimistic with, with some tweaking to the plan that we could satisfy the concerns that were raised by your neighbors. I'm convinced that the revisions that you've offered have done just that. There was no opposition here this evening, so I'm pleased to be able to say that once again, I will vote in favor of this petition and wish you the very best. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. So, as I mentioned at the last meeting, I mean, I grew up in the neighborhood, I'm familiar with Corbett Street, and yes, the houses there are very, the lots are very small, the houses are very compact, they're right next to each other, and I appreciate that, you know, you took the advice of the board of what our concerns, and also the neighbors' concerns, because there was opposition at the initial hearing from the neighbors, and went back to the drawing board and, and brought us back some plans that seemed to be amenable to your client and, and to many, answered many of the concerns of the members of the board, so we really appreciate you and your client doing that. So that being said, I don't, that being said, I don't see any concerns on this. I would, I had the same concerns about Dennis, about the, the site plan missing a couple things. The bulkhead needs to be removed. It also showed on the renderings, too. It looked like the renderings that were included that had the bulkhead added on in the back, I, I couldn't tell if there was a tunnel being dug from the initial bulkhead from the back of the thing or whatever, but the bulkhead, we need a new plan to show that the bulkhead's removed, being removed, and also that the renderings, they're not shown on the renderings either, so.
There's no bulkhead here.
Yeah, there was a, there was a, the basement, the basement floor plan, there was something, there was a bulkhead, there was still something on there with the bulkhead on the basement floor plan, so. Yeah, right there, see? So, yes, we need the new site plan that's removing the bulkhead and including the side stair and also making sure that the FAR is correct, and also, I guess, correct the, the table on the, on the, to show what the, because Dennis pointed out, there were some issues, the side yard is wrong, too, so. That being said, if your client is amenable to the conditions that have were proposed by Member McCarthy, I would be in support of this, so is that something that your client would be agreeable to?
Yeah, we'll abide by the condition of the board, yes.
Yep, okay, great. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for CBA 2023-43 for variances at 69 Corbett Street with the condition that the applicant provide a revised site plan correctly showing the FAR at .85, correcting the site plan to not show the bulkhead, correcting the site plan to depict the side yard setback correctly. Is that it?
Yep.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Member McCarthy, seconded by Member Brier. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approving conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with conditions.
Member Prokop.
Approve with conditions.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Hovey.
Deny.
Member Nickerson.
Approved.
Sir, you've been approved with conditions. I wish your clients the best of luck. Thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Moving on to our next petition on the Continued Business, we have CBA 2024-2, variance. The applicant is Flo Monsalve, property located at 123 Varnum Ave. Flo Monsalve has applied to the Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals seeking variance approval to construct an addition to the rear of their house at 123 Varnum Avenue. Subject property is located in the traditional single-family zoning district. The proposal requires variance approval under Section 5.1 for maximum floor area ratio requirement and other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. Is the petition a present?
Are you translating? Or are you, oh, Bean, just introduce yourself and, is, is you translating or is that, okay. So could you just introduce yourselves for the record and your address and have someone just talk about your petition, please, so?
My name is Cam Zawari. I'm his brother-in-law.
Okay.
He's like a supervisor for construction.
Can you pull the microphone, please, speak in the microphone, it's tough to hear.
My name is Cam Zawari.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm brother-in-law for him. He has a license.
CS license.
CS license. He's a supervisor for construction.
So, Mr. Martinez?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So why don't you just tell us about the project and what's being proposed, please?
So we have, we have, we started doing some construction on that project and somehow did not get approved by city and neighboring people. We submitted a new plan. I have a copy if you want to see it.
Do you have them with you today?
Yes, the copy is here.
We'll take, we'll take a look, you have, if you have extra copies. Are those the same ones or?
I think it was. They originally belonged to 2024.
Yeah.
Something in there was, it was different.
So are these different or are these the same?
I think we submitted.
Okay, these are the same of what we have before us, sir, so, I mean, if you need them, do you need them back or? Yeah. So I understand, so you previously applied, you were, or something happened, you were rejected by the Building Commission or something like that, and they told, they told you that you had to come to the city with plans, and you submitted those plans, that's what's before us today on the board, that's what you're asking?
About a year ago, we, about a year ago, we applied for the plan and somehow didn't get approved or something like that.
Okay.
So they started doing construction on.
Okay, so why don't you, those are the same plans we have in front of us, so why don't you tell us what your project is or what you're, what you're proposing to do?
So it's going to be 20 by 14 construction.
Okay.
Might have that on that.
So just putting, putting the addition on, yep?
And we have a, yeah, addition will be 20 by 14, and we're going to have a deck 6 by 14.
Okay. Is that all, that all?
That's about it we're going to do.
Okay. Right now, I'm just going to open up to the public, there's a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Seeing none, that portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Seeing none, that portion of the public hearing is now closed. Now, I'd like to open up to the board. Member, the Chair recognizes Member Hovey. Member Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, we have the plans. It seems pretty straightforward. We're asking for .04 beginners on an FAR. This is all, you meet all setbacks, side yard and everything else, and, you know, it's one story. one story where, you know, if you wanted to press it, I know you have a dormer there, you could have went up two. So, yeah, if we're talking about .04 and it's hidden from the front of the house, everything's within the house, I have no problems and I support it.
Thank you, Tim. Chair recognizes member Prokop. Member Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I echo the sentiments of member Hovey. The only issue I had is just trying to park in front of the house to take a look at all that oncoming traffic, but I think the plans are much better than it was last year, so, and it, the minimum, it's minimum relief that's being asked, so I don't have a problem with it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, George. The chair recognizes member McCarthy. Member McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of questions, but Peter, it occurred to me that the side yard setback is 10 some 25 in the TSF, and we're looking for relief on side yard setback as well. Is that correct?
I think so, yeah. You have pretty clear answer, right? Yep.
So we're looking for relief on FAR and side yard setback, even though the existing house doesn't meet side yard setback either, but, and I understand that we're not worsening an existing condition from the street, but we are from the side yard, that's all.
Yeah, that's what it is.
But if it's not extending the non-conformity?
The new construction is continuing with the, with not meeting the side yard setback.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
So my fellow board members, it's two, two elements of relief for looking at side yard setback as well as FAR. That being said, I agree, this makes a lot of sense here in this neighborhood, and it's not a big addition that you're putting on, so I feel I can support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dennis. Chair recognizes member Brier. Member Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with staff that the requested relief is minimal, and I'll be supporting the petition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mark. Chair recognizes member Nickerson. Member Nickerson, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, I have to just, you know, both my colleagues as well, it's a very minimal setback, so I'll be in favor as well.
Thank you, John. So you heard the wishes of the board, sir, and I'll note that, looking at the comments from DPD staff, they seem to find that the requested relief is minimal and doesn't interrogate from the intent of zoning, so I think this, this looks like something that could be put forth. So, that being said, any other comments, questions, or concerns by the board? No? That being said, can I have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2024-2 for variances at 123 Varnum Ave, for variance for maximum floor area ratio and for side yard setback.
Motion by member McCarthy, seconded by member Prokop. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approved.
Member Prokop.
Approved.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approve.
Thank you.
Sir, you've been approved. Wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda on the new business, we have ZBA 2024-11, special permit. The applicant is Savani Salk, property located at 213 Trumps Street. Savani Salk has applied to the Lowell zoning board of appeals to operate an aesthetics and nail technician training school at 213 Trumps Street. Property is located in the neighborhood business zoning district and requires a special permit under section 12.3c for use and any other relief required under the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, how are you doing?
Good evening. So my name's Amanda Flores. I'm an attorney at Gallagher and Kavanaugh, and I represent Savani Salk. So Savani Salk is the manager and owner of Pro Care Beauty School LLC. She's also the owner of the subject property at 213 Chelmsford Street. Since 2020, Savani has owned and operated a nail salon at this location, and despite the challenges of the pandemic, she was able to grow her salons and open a new location in Chelmsford last year and Bedford this year. Savani has wanted to start an aesthetics and nail tech training school for quite some time, and the special permit would allow her to open one at this location. For Lowell, this would, this would be a new job training and educational program that's not currently offered, so right now, the school spaces are in the cosmetology and hair salon industry. And so we know that there were concerns raised regarding parking, so the class cap for students would be eight students. There are four off-street parking spaces that Savani created when she had purchased the property, and there is plenty of off-street parking directly on Chelmsford Street. So I know one of the concerns raised in the memo was, you know, use of the crosswalk and crossing Chelmsford Street, but there's actually parking that is adjacent to, on the same side as the building that would, you know, not require folks to actually cross the street. In addition, the proposed school type would be hybrid learning, so most of the classes would actually be virtual, and only the practical aspects of the training would be in-person. And as part of that in-person practicum hours, those don't necessarily need to all be at the same time with the students and could be scheduled to, again, alleviate some parking and traffic concerns in the area. And if there are any additional concerns regarding parking, I did print some aerial views if anyone would like to have those to reference.
Thank you, counsel. Appreciate the, the presentation. If anything else further, I'll just open up to the public and.
We can open up.
Okay. That being said, I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Seeing none, that portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Seeing none, that portion of the public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open up to the board. Chair recognizes member Prokop. Member Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, counsel, for addressing the traffic issue, because that was, again, always a concern of ours. If, correct me if I'm wrong, you said that you own the property, so the parking spaces on the left belongs to that property of 213?
Correct.
And that's four spaces? So you have, you say a maximum of eight students. You have four off-street parking, and four can park on Chelmsford Street. What days of the week do you have those classes? Here, I'm thinking of the traffic wise.
So the classes would primarily be on weeknights as opposed to the nail salon that exists on the first floor. It wouldn't be open, the nail salon wouldn't be open as late as the classes are offered. It's really meant as an additional educational opportunity for people that might work nine to five.
Okay. Yeah. In that case, to me, it makes sense. I mean, this is, this is not even an issue, because if you have any classes at night, you have spaces for four people, and four can park on this, on this, on Chelmsford Street. As I'm taking pictures yesterday, I saw the cars there. I, I think this is, this is very minor from a request perspective, so I'll be voting in favor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, George. Chair recognizes member McCarthy. Member McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank you for investing in the city and providing a training service to help people get better jobs. This is wonderful. I would like to condition the approval on a six-month administrative review to address any parking concerns that might arise. It does look like you're in a stretch of Chelmsford Street that has plenty of on-street parking on either side of you where there aren't businesses because of the topography, so there's plenty of on-street parking, as far as I see as well, that would support the number of people that you have at the facility. Just in case you're overly, you know, ambitious and your eight students grows to more than that, I think an administrative review would just be prudent, just to make sure that we're not addressing, we're not, we're not overlooking parking concerns that we should be more aware of, that's all. But I would like to support this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Chair recognizes member Brier. Member Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be voting in favor of the petition, and I'll be rooting for your continued success. Thanks for your investment in the city.
Thank you, Mark. Chair recognizes member Nickerson. Member Nickerson, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, as someone that has a cosmetology license for 24 years myself, I mean, I know the struggles I went through to get to the schools, and I didn't have a car back then. So, I mean, I know Lowell offers a lot of public transportation. This, I took a bus and two trains to there and home, so I know people in the trades. I mean, I also have an HVAC license, so I do the same thing for that, so I know people in the trades, you know, who drive, so I wasn't too concerned about the parking myself personally, but I'm totally in favor of this, though. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Chair recognizes member Hovey. Member Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I'm glad parking was brought up, because I actually did look into this a little bit. I live in the area, so I drive Chelmsford Street multiple times a day. You have on-street, where the building is, from Bangor Market all the way down to WTF, which there's parking spots there, usually available most times of the day. I thought you were going to say a higher number of people in class, which I would have been fine with also. You have the four off-street parking spots. You also have parking across the street, still on Chelmsford Street. I know that they brought up Cambridge Street. I'm not 100% sure why people would park on Cambridge Street, and they brought up the crosswalk. However, February, there was a motion response back to the city council on a motion council Scott made regarding crosswalks in Gorham, Woburn, Boylston, and Chelmsford Street, and the DPD, I believe, is doing a study on that portion where Cambridge Street is, about adding a crosswalk there. So the city's addressing it already. And then in March, there was a motion response that they're also looking into putting a light at that Cambridge Street, Chelmsford Street intersection. So there's two things that the city's doing to address the parking over there. I think as it is, there's plenty of parking over there, especially during the day. You know, there's a restaurant at the Old Gala Club, the Shabu Shack now. I don't know how busy they are during the day. I don't think they're quite busy during the day. It's more of a nighttime thing, and you already said it's hybrid. I really don't see an issue with this at all. I hope your classes do expand to more than eight and you knock it out of the box. So good luck, I support this 100%.
Thank you, Tim. I think it's fantastic, you know, you're just expanding your business and, you know, moving along to now teaching the future aesthetics and nail technicians of the world, so I commend you on that. That's fantastic, so. The parking, I think, yeah, a six-month review would probably be reasonable, I would suggest, and if this is approved, that just to make, just to double-check and make sure, I mean, you say you'll have eight students at some point, but you have, are you the only instructor or there are going to be other instructors there as well or?
So, currently, I have one instructor as a manicurist, and then I am, I am both licensed as a teaching instructor and manicurist, but because of the state requirement that each class need to have one instructor.
Okay.
You know, during the teaching, so I hiring one instructor to help me out.
Okay. Yep, I didn't know if there was like different portions that like you handle one part and another instructor handles another, and then now we're talking eight people, and then, like, business starts booming and you can't handle the load, then 12 people, 12 students and three instructors. So that's why I think the six-month review is reasonable, just to double-check and make sure, and I think, but I think that in the end, this is a, it's going to be a success probably like you, I'm presuming like your other businesses, too, because, I mean, and I appreciate it and thank you for investing in the city like this. So, that being said, any other comments, questions, or concerns from the board members? That being said, can I have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2024-11 for a special permit at 213 Chelmsford Street with the condition that there be a six-month administrative review to address parking issues if they arise.
Second.
Motion by member McCarthy, seconded by member Prokop. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approval conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approved with condition.
Member Prokop.
Approved with conditions.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approved.
Yeah, you've been approved. Wish you the absolute best of luck on your business, so.
I much appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, yeah.
Thanks. Moving on to the next item on the agenda on the new business, we have ZBA 2024-12, special permit. The applicant is All About Signs LLC, property located in 176 Walker Street. All About Signs LLC has applied to the Lowell zoning board of appeals to erect an internally illuminated signage at 176 Walker Street. Subject property is located in the light industrial zoning district. The proposal requires special permit approval per section 6.3 for internally illuminated signage and for any other relief required under the Lowell zoning ordinance. Anybody here for the petitioner? Any via Zoom?
The applicant was sent the Zoom link earlier today, but I don't see them in the waiting room.
Nobody is present in the chambers? What is the will of the board, I guess?
Well, this is such a minor request, I think we could possibly overlook the lack of attendance, and it's supported by the economic development director, and also the square footage is meeting, is compliant with zoning, so I kind of wish the zoning bylaws didn't require us to have this, but I see it as a minor request.
Anybody else, comments, questions?
Can we just, can we vote to approve it without them here?
I, I mean, well, Peter, we can, if we believe that the, what's before us is sufficient, but we still would open up to the public to see if anybody's here. We can still rely upon the paperwork, correct? We don't need the applicant to just be present?
As far as I know, that you, they don't need to be here. Usually, when we tell people to be here, it's just so you guys can talk to them, but...
Well, yeah, it's common, it's common practice, obviously, if we have questions.
Yep.
So, but, just because the applicant will be here to answer them, but I guess, we go through the public hearing and then the board has questions to ask, then the applicant's not here, then we're kind of, got to catch 22 there, so.
Right, right.
But I, for one, I think we could proceed without the applicant present, but if the board, after looking at the paperwork, thinks that they may have questions of the applicant and the applicant's not present, then we may want to consider continuance. So I'll, anybody else wish to comment? Member Prokop?
Yeah, I agree, Mr. Chairman. I mean, this, this request is, again, it's such a minor infraction on the process that it would be a shame to even continue to, for them to come back, and this is something that we, we don't have questions on, because it's, 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 we've gone through this so many times, and it does fit within what, what they're looking for. I would be in favor of moving forward.
Okay. Well, I mean, before I open up to the public, I just want to find out if any of the, any members, after looking at the paperwork, would have, would believe they would have questions from the, from the applicant, on, on the application, based on the paperwork. Member Nickerson? Would you have any questions or?
Is there like a condition about the, the hours of illumination? Like a standard for that, or were there?
Yeah, we usually do that, right?
Yeah. Just to be consistent.
There's, that brings another question, too, to, we can't put conditions, we could put the conditions on something, but normally we want the approval of the, of the applicant, or have the applicant at least agree to it, so. Member Hovey, would you have any questions or?
No, there is something that... I think this is something that, and Peter, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but Lowell Ford is kind of going to address this, a special permit with signage as it is, correct? So I think, you know, it's something that comes before us all the time relatively, I don't want to say for no reason at all, but this is going to be something that's addressed. I don't see an issue with it. You know, if we want to do, I don't think we necessarily need conditions on it either. The way this thing's set back and...
with the public hearing, open it up and then just proceed with the, proceed with the petition on the paperwork. That being said, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Anyone which should speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Seeing none, that portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Seeing none, that portion of the public hearing is now closed. I'll open it up to the board again for comments or concerns or questions or anything else before we vote on the petition. Chair recognizes member McCarthy. Member McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that I'm glad the applicant has chosen to keep the signage within our required sign ordinance dimensions and also the fact that this sets back from the street a good 150-plus feet and also is partly screened by the building itself from the southwest side. So I really don't see this as having an impact on, on the public on Walker Street. It's more for identification for where the facility is when to arrive at the site itself, in my opinion. So I could support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Chair recognizes member Brier. Member Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark. Chair recognizes member Nickerson. Member Nickerson, the floor is yours, sir.
No questions.
Thank you, John. Chair recognizes member Harvey. Member Harvey, the floor is yours, sir.
No questions.
Thank you. Tim, chair recognizes member Prokop. Member Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
No questions.
Those, short and sweet. Okay. Yeah, I would agree with Dennis on this and I agree with proceeding. This seems pretty straightforward. The economic developer, development director has issued comments in support. DPD states that they don't have any concerns about the signage at their location. I guess if there's any issues with regards to hours of illumination, that would be addressed by DPD and I guess we'll take that up if and when DPD somehow gets this matter before us again. So if, if that ever happens. So I don't see any need for conditions on hours of illumination at this time. So that being said, if there's any other questions or concerns? If not, can we have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, would like to make a motion for ZVA twenty twenty-four dash twelve for a special permit at one seventy-six Walker Street for an illuminated sign.
Second.
Motion by member McCarthy, seconded by member Harvey. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Prokop.
Approved.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Harvey.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approved.
Okay, petition's been approved. Moving on to our next item on the agenda under other business, we have minutes for approval for March 25th, 2024. Any comments, questions, concerns, revisions? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, would like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March 25th, 2024.
Second.
Motion by member McCarthy, seconded by member Prokop. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approved with meeting minutes for March 25th, 2024.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the meeting minutes of March 25th, 2024.
Member Prokop.
Approve minutes for March 25th, 2024.
Member Harvey.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approved.
Okay, meeting minutes have been approved. Anybody else have any comments before we adjourn? Member McCarthy?
I would just like to say how grateful I am that we in Lowell were able to enjoy the solar eclipse. I've never had one hit this close to my home in my lifetime, so it was a, and the next one's out in Montana and South Dakota and North Dakota and forty-four, so this is the best it gets. Thank you.
You mean you're not going to be out there on the next, for the next one?
I'm going to try.
Well, thank you, thank you, Dennis. Anybody else? Any comments, questions or concerns? No? That being said, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by member McCarthy, seconded by member Harvey.